Then I can see presentation.
Yeah.
You can even come down here. Riley's not going to be here either.
Where's Rick?
I don't know. Where is Rick?
Uh-huh.
Somebody called here earlier. He was here earlier.
Did you hear anything from Rick?
I wonder if he forgot about this one.
Could I just, Judy?
No, you can't cheat.
Did you hear from Rick?
No.
I only heard from Judy and Riley.
Okay.
Want to go ahead and start?
I think so. Can somebody text him?
I'll do it from here. I can do it from here.
Okay, thank you. On record, good evening. Welcome to the Lincoln City Urban Renewal Agency meeting of August 12th. That's 5:00 PM. And I'd like to call us all to order. And if you, if anyone is here to speak on an agenda or non-agenda item, please sign up at the sheet at near, back at the entrance on the table. And you'll be called to speak during the public comments section. Comments or testimony on agenda items listed under public hearing, public comment will be taken at that time. Are there any requests for agenda changes? No? Okay, thank you. Kathy, could you do a roll call, please?
Dick Anderson.
Yes.
Judy Casper. Deanna Hinton.
Yes.
Riley Hoagland is excused. Diane Kooz.
Here.
Rick Mark. And Mitch Parsons.
Yes.
Thank you. The next thing on the agenda are comments from citizens on the agenda item or not. I mean on the, oh, thank you, Allison. Okay. No one wishes to speak? All right. All right. The next thing on the, our agenda is the Urban Renewal Regular Meeting Minutes of June 10th. Do I have a motion to approve?
Madam Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 10th, 2019.
Thank you.
Second.
Uh-oh, did we flip a coin?
I get this one.
Okay.
She can have it.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I need to abstate because I wasn't here for that meeting. Okay. And next on our agenda are presentations. And the first one is the Economic Development, Bay Area Merchants Association, otherwise known as BAMA, a downtown manager. And we have Allison Robertson.
Hello, Chair Hinton and agency members. So, we're here before you tonight with a couple of objectives. This will be an annual update from the Bay Area Merchants Association on their downtown manager position. And the downtown manager is funded through an agency economic development grant. And past updates have been made to the agency on May 15th, 2017, and then again in January of this year, and that's usually been not in summer when they're very busy and in front of, or mostly in front of events. And then also with some staff changes. And then the second objective we have tonight is for you to consider approval of BAMA's request to handle payroll through an online payroll system. I'm happy to talk a little more about the economic development toolbox and the history of downtown manager if you have any questions before I introduce Shelley Stewart.
Any questions of staff?
Okay, great. Shelley, do you want to come up?
Thanks. Good afternoon. So, I guess I'm here to give you a report on our activities. The last time I was here was in January and I'd been in my position for, I think, a week and a half or something like that. So, I really appreciate the opportunity to come back to you at this time and talk to you about what BAMA has accomplished in the last six months. And you have a report that we provided to you, and I don't want to read the entire report. I just want to bring your attention to it and maybe give you a couple of the highlights. And if you have any questions specifically about any of the things on there, please do ask me. We, as a board and staff, we decided to go back and watch the video that Allison provided to us. I think it was in 2014 when this position was first being thought about and conceptualized to see what the initial intent was. And at that time, was it Patty Webb?
Yes.
Patty Webb came and spoke to the members of City Council Urban Renewal Agency to talk about her position. She was formerly the downtown manager for McMinnville. So, she gave some advice and some ideas for structure for this position. And she really emphasized throughout, as we watched that video, Main Street America's four points approach to community-based revitalization, talking about economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization. And so, that's why we took, we decided to structure this report based on those four points of revitalization. So, in economic vitality, we are working to grow our economic base by bringing new members into BAMA. And we emphasize the South Lincoln City geographical area, but there are other businesses and individuals in Lincoln City who do want to support the revitalization of South Lincoln City. And so, we invite everybody who is interested in that to become a member. I'm really happy to report that we have 20 new members in BAMA who joined in the first half of 2019. And so, we're currently at 47 members, which is a 74% increase over the last six months. In design, we continue to look at South Lincoln City with an eye to, to increasing its attractiveness. And so, we're working with the city of Lincoln City on the sign ordinance and trying to work in collaboration in that area specifically. I was really pleased. We have a member organization, Family Promise, is in Taft, and it's a member of BAMA. And they are doing amazing and vital work for our community, so we're so happy to have them there. On the other hand, they're right on Highway 101, so it's not the best face that we want to put forward for tourism. So, we thought, we talked with them, we thought about ways that we might be able to improve that streetscape where Family Promise is. One is, the current windows that they have really don't have window coverings, so anybody can just walk by. And it's not as safe or as private for Family Promise staff and their clients as it could be with their current window displays. So, and then we would like something that would be more attractive from the outside as well, and more kind of tourist-friendly and shopping and streetscape-friendly. So, thanks to a grant from the city of Lincoln City, we're so proud. This is kind of our first collaboration in that area. We're going to partner with Family Promise to get new window coverings, which will be not see-through on the outside, but on the inside you can see out, so that there's privacy for the people inside the building and also provides an attractive view for the people walking up and down the street. So, we're really happy with that in the area of design. There are other things that we're trying to do little by little, like working with the museum to raise awareness of their needs for new paint job. And just as I talk to the members and talk about what they need and what they'd like to see, then we try to figure out ways to implement that. In promotion, as we talked with members, they are really slammed during the summer months, and then in the fall and the winter, as you know, things really wane. And we decided to put together a promotion that will go into the fall months called Taft Beach Bingo. And this was free to BAMA members who wanted to participate. They only had to opt in. And each BAMA member that opted in got a square on the bingo sheet. And people who want to play take these in to, and then the back is kind of a directory of the businesses. And tourists and residents and anybody who wants to participate is encouraged to visit these businesses and go in and get a stamp on their bingo card. And when they have a bingo, they can turn it in for glass souvenir from the Lincoln City Glass Center. Or they can, they can do that and, not or. They can also enter into a drawing in November, or in December for glass floats and a grand prize for the blackout winners of gift certificates from all the participating businesses. So, I think it's going to be a fun promotion. It's really served to invigorate a lot of the businesses. They're really excited to participate. People seem to think it's pretty cute, so.
May I ask you a question?
Of course.
Sorry to interrupt, but where do people pick these up?
So, I started handing them out at the Sandcastle Contest on Saturday, but everybody was so Sandcastle-focused that not a lot went out. And they're going to be available at all of the participating businesses going forward. Most of them, I think, are going to go to the corner businesses and to the center. So, the museum will have a lot, and Eleanor's Undertow, and Melo's Takeria, et cetera.
Welcome. Let's see.
So, in terms of organization, we've done so much, it's really hard to kind of narrow things down about the things that I want to talk about. But again, it's all there in your report, so I really hope you'll take the time to read it because we're really proud of the things that we've accomplished. We built a new website. We put a new e-commerce platform on there so it would be easier for people to renew their memberships via the website. We have built our following on BAMA Facebook page and strategically post on a regular basis. We've also started a Taft, haunted Taft, sorry, website and Facebook page, and we're building the following on those as well. And speaking of haunted Taft, we are so proud of this program. Because, you know, last October it was a great success, and then we kind of took a hiatus. And in April, we started the program again with new and updated stories and started offering the tour every month on the full moon just to see if there would be a market for this outside of the Halloween time. And it turns out, since we started offering it on April, we have sold out and really oversold for the tour every single month. Our July tour sold out in May. And it's just been so popular. And then I have people that are like, "I really want..." And the tours are on the full moon, so it can be a Tuesday, or a Thursday, or a Sunday, or whenever. And so, it's really amazing to me to see that these are selling out on Tuesdays and Thursdays and whatnot. We did, so it's been so popular that I do need to hire more tour guides. That's kind of been hard. And I'm really pleased to announce that we've added a tour on August, it's a Saturday, I think it's the 24th. And Elizabeth Chandler of the Ron Chandler family
Talented one.
Is studying her stories right now, and she's going to be our next tour guide. We're really excited about that. And we also, in October, we're really going to step up the tours and do several tours a week. The first chance, well, our exciting little promo that we're going to do with City Council, hopefully, is City Council Night on October 4th. That's the first Friday in October. And each City Council member will have a story and a location. And we're hoping that our mayor will dress up as Abraham Lincoln and lead the group from storyteller to storyteller. We've, we've...
You're getting about the same reaction you got for me.
As I hear feedback from people in the community, so many are really excited about haunted Taft and think it's just the greatest thing ever, but they say, "Oh, you know, but we can't really afford those ticket prices." So, we thought, why not do a City Council Night and offer half-price tickets to anybody that lives in a 97367 zip code on City Council Night? So.
Do they know that you get what you pay for?
I have high hopes. I think you guys are going to do really, really well. So, that's basically what I have for my report, and I welcome any questions.
I have a couple before I throw it open to the rest of this group. Is that a new logo?
It is a new logo.
It's very cute.
I'm glad you like it.
For those who can't see it, it's a crab. It's very cute.
What we were trying to do with this logo, Taft is, or crab, the crab is the traditional logo of the Taft Pearl. But we also wanted to show that Taft is part of the city of Lincoln City. And so, we tried to echo the playfulness of the logo with the same colors and the same kind of playfulness for BAMA.
That's great. My second question is that you mentioned that you have 20 new members this year. How many members total? I missed it when I was reading through here.
I think it was 47.
Okay.
Yeah, 47.
47, great. Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair. Shelley, I love, I love the report, and it's a nice update, and so I appreciate you doing that. I'm glad you also went back to 2014. Because as I'm recalling, the unspoken objective was to eventually have the Taft Village Corps support itself. So, I, what I find missing in your update is some kind of a sense of the businesses in that corps willing to pay for someone like yourself, the manager. And maybe, you can tell me, it's too early to tell. Or, you know, and I'm thinking of business taxes, I recall, from McMinnville had talked about that Downcount had actually taxed themselves for marketing. And so, I would see the businesses willing to do that if they saw an increase in, you know, revenue of the activities that's going on. Have you had any gauging of that? Are the...
Everything is anecdotal. My sense in talking to businesses and even recruiting them to join BAMA is that even that, you know, $65 membership fee is a big step for them, which is, it's hard for me to believe, but this is what I'm hearing over and over again. So, it's something that we need to consider. I think one of the big incentives for them to join was that we made this Taft Beach Bingo promotion available to members for free. And then they saw, okay, well, we're getting some concrete marketing assistance for that. So, I think, I, I think it's difficult for the businesses, actually, to make a step in paying what would need to be paid to sustain a position like what I'm doing at BAMA. I think it could be part of it, for sure, but certainly not the whole amount.
So, then what you're telling me, you're just on a short-term employment? And you know it?
I don't, I don't know. We continue to look for ways to fund the position. Yeah. And that's forefront on everybody's mind on the board as well.
And I think, and I appreciate that's what I wanted to make sure, but I think the businesses need to know that. And I'm hoping you're really kind of pressing them as to their increased revenue, in essence, from the activities that the organization is doing. And there's a cost associated, or soon-to-be cost associated if they want it to continue. Don't miss the opportunity to remind them.
Oh. We remind them. I do want to point out that, I'm not sure this is quite the right time, but BAMA was a little bit, found itself in a little bit of a financial predicament this year too because for many years it's relied on grants from Explore Lincoln City in order to do some of these, well, the Sandcastle Contest, for example, which we just had on Saturday, which was huge, and haunted Taft. We wouldn't have been able to launch that program without a grant from Explore Lincoln City. And we expected those grants to continue. However, because of my association with the person in charge of Explore Lincoln City, BAMA has withdrawn from any applications from financial support for that, which means there's another, there's another way that we need to find to make up that revenue. And so, we kind of find ourselves between a rock and a hard place. We're providing this amazing service for our community, but not, and not sure how we're going to be able to fund ourselves going forward.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. So, what's, when you sell out for your tours, how many people is that?
Are you worried about how many people you're going to have to perform for? We, we limit the online ticket sales to 20 because they're, you know, we don't want to have too many people, then it's hard to hear the tour guide over the waves of the ocean and all that.
That's right.
Right? But we do get a number of walk-ups, and so typically every tour will have about 25, 26 people on it.
Good to know. I have a very soft voice.
Well, that's why you can be, you can lead people around if you have, if you happen to have another Abe Lincoln costume handy.
I reminded her that Abe Lincoln didn't have a mustache, and, you know, I can't shave mine, so.
Well, you'd be in trouble.
Anyway.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your...
Do you need action on this payroll?
Payroll, yeah. That was my next.
I think there were, Allison, to help us. Two suggested motions. One to accept the update from Bay Area Merchants Association, and one whether or not you decide to approve the BAMA request to handle payroll through an online system.
Do we want to talk about that for a minute? Do you want to explain it, please?
Sure.
Online payroll.
As part of our original downtown manager program, we, we had this two-year pilot project that had some original partners, like the Small Business Development Center, that was going to provide space for the employee of BAMA and then also use a regional payroll specialist to make sure that that was being done in the right way and, you know, audited and all of that kind of stuff. So, at this point, the request is coming from BAMA because they are trying to be fiscally prudent. We have had the program go for longer than two years, as you know. And so, we have used that payroll specialist for at least two years, which I think was their expectation as well. So, it's really up to you to decide if you need more information or if you want to accept this request, where they would do the processing online through a system or not. And Shelley's here, obviously, if you have questions about it. She has more experience with it than I do, so.
I guess, Madam Chair, my only question would be, what's the downside or fallback as far as our agency having given you the grant? If for some reason payroll doesn't work correctly? Is there any responsibility, I'm looking at city attorney, back to the agency? Last I checked, IRS and state would just go after you, BAMA.
Exactly.
I just don't want it to come after me.
We can, we can have them sign something. That's all I can say. You can never really stop the IRS. We'll fine everybody.
So, in all seriousness, that is our correct, I'm just because we gave the grant.
I don't think we're looking at liability, but again, we can disclaim it.
Okay. Any other comments, questions about that? Okay. So, we have two motions. Let's take one at a time.
Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the update from the Bay Area Merchants Association.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Second. Okay. I think Dick wins this time. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We have a second motion on the table about the payroll through an online system.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve BAMA's request to handle payroll through an online system.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Appreciate the update. It's good to know what you're doing way down there.
Way down.
Way down there.
Way down in the south.
Way down south.
Way down south.
And we have another presentation. Just trying to wake us up. And this presentation is for economic development. It's the Small Business Development Center. And this is an annual update for the local program support grant.
Okay, so, this is another annual update. So, Dave Price, Director of the Small Business Development Center here at the North Lincoln County Center of Oregon Coast Community College, will provide an update. And then, following that on the agenda is their application for grant request. And I just wanted to make a note that in the staff report for the grant request, there was a mistake in the staff report that I believe got corrected. Our city recorder was kind enough to re-upload the, after the mistake was caught. So, their official request is $13,500 for their project number one and $6,500 for their project number two. I also wanted to just note that for the fiscal year 1819, their request was $20,000. They used about $10,580. And so, $9420 or $9,420 was not spent. So, they are underspending. I know that's not their intention, but no over expenditures.
So, do you want to go ahead, Dave?
Sure. Chair Hinton and members of the agency, thanks for having me here. For the record, I'd just like to say that I think Councilor Mark would also make a compelling Abe Lincoln.
Thank you.
Giving you some options. So, what I, what I might be doing is kind of marrying the two things that we're on the agenda for, the report that sort of updates where you were, where we were, and maybe touch on a few things regarding what we hope to do with the coming year. And then, also, I brought with me two folks who I thought maybe could pop up here very briefly after I'm done and answer any questions you might have. One of them is Misty Lambrecht, who is the coordinator of our Small Business Management Program, which is one of the two projects before you in the application and certainly the biggest user of the scholarship support fees. It's our cornerstone project. We're going to talk a little bit about it here in the presentation. And speaking of, our other guest today is Marcy Baker. Marcy is the winner of our Small Business Management Business of the Year. And she is a business owner right here in the Ocean Lake District of Lincoln City and was a recipient of one of the scholarships that you made possible last year. So, I thought maybe that would be more compelling than just hearing me again. But very briefly, the headline here is, and this number was actually inaccurate. But very briefly, the headline here is, and this number was actually inaccurate because Allison cited the number, it's just over 10,000 that we spent, which is accurate. This left out a couple, this left out a term, actually. But through the academic year, ended June 2019, you folks made possible scholarships to, through the Economic Development Toolkit Program of just an worth of $10,000. I'm sorry I didn't get a chance to change this. I was really, really good, and I submitted this like 10 days in advance, and then someone, you catch an error and I can't fix it. But just a little background for viewers and for anyone who's not totally familiar with this. Since 2013, just prior to my arrival at the Small Business Development Center and the community college, the Urban Renewal Agency has allowed businesses to, to take advantage of the same funds that they might be able to take advantage of for a 10-year no-interest loan for a new awning, or another way to beautify or improve their business. They've used those exact same funds to make available these scholarships. And we just think it's an admirable thing that the city's doing. And I don't know that you could find a more business-friendly thing than to provide business education and real-world, actionable intelligence that we provide term in, term out, at no out-of-pocket cost, just because your business is located within the Urban Renewal District. And if you're watching at home and you have a business in the Urban Renewal District and this sounds too good to be true, it is not. It is absolutely true. And so I just want to thank you for that. I think it's remarkable. And with it, some of the courses that people have taken with no out-of-pocket cost over the past three terms, organizing with the Google Suite, search engine optimization, social media marketing, QuickBooks, Doing Business in Lincoln County, shoebox bookkeeping, QuickBooks Online, and then Profit Mastery, which some people have called the most valuable course we've ever offered. It's a really robust course that Misty leads that talks about how to, instead of just hitting print on QuickBooks and spitting out an income statement or a balance sheet or one of these other financial statements, to understand the correlations between the various statements and how to use them to actually drive your business and to make business decisions based on hard data that are strategic in nature. And it's a real powerful course. But again, Small Business Management Program is, is the centerpiece of all we do at the Small Business Development Center. This is an ad that we ran in the NewsGuard this, this year, celebrating our graduates. Just over half of those folks were here in Lincoln City. The other half were down in Walport, and largely funded by a program very similar to this one, inspired by what Lincoln City has done. And I just want to thank you for that. You've led by example countywide. And we had 31 folks start the program this year. 27 of them saw it through to the end. We always have attrition in that range because it's, can be really hard to make all those classes and all those advising sessions. And if your schedule is such that you thought you could make the commitment and then you really wind up you can't, we kind of ask that, hey, maybe this isn't for you right now. We really need to focus on the people who can attend. And we invite those people to come back and give it a try when their schedule might be more forgiving. We've got a number of folks from this year, from Bear Valley Nursery to the Elements Salon, to contractors, to, hey, a bar in Ocean Lake, Marcy's Bar and Bistro, how about that? You'll hear more about Marcy's in a minute. But let's see, I mentioned that Walport has launched a program very similar to what it is you're doing. And for anyone else who's watching at home who wants to know more about this, even if they, they fall without, outside of the Urban Renewal Agency, we still welcome you in. And we have some wonderful scholarship supports that can help make the program as affordable as possible, funded by folks like the Mills family. RQ Mills Ace Hardware was one of our very first participants. Roger and Ty Mills have been through the program. They've been very generous in supporting it to ensure that other businesses in Lincoln City and beyond can take advantage. So we have other sources where we can help provide some support to businesses that would like to participate. You can visit our website, oregoncoastcc.org, and just click Business and the Small Business Development Center, and you can register for the SBM there. And what you're doing there is basically saying, hey, I'm interested. And then Misty schedules a one-on-one appointment with you, and we explain the program in a little more detail, find out if it's really a good fit, and then we move forward if it's going to be a good fit mutually. Other classes that we have coming up, we have a whole lot of new things that we're bringing to the fore in fall. And if this grant application that is before you is successful, then anyone in the Urban Renewal Agency will be able to take any of these classes at no out-of-pocket cost. Leadership training with Jaleen Case, who's pictured here. Profit Mastery, we just talked about. Personnel Management Fundamentals, that's something that we haven't offered before, except for when we've brought speakers out from Bowley or things like that. We hope to do that again this year, by the way. But with things like paid family leave and other things impacting businesses of all sizes throughout Lincoln City, we thought maybe now is the time to really double down on HR. Wave Apps Bookkeeping. We are offering a CCB license and exam class. If you need a CCB or you know someone in your neighborhood or in your family that needs to get a contractor's license, they come and spend two days with me, a Friday and a Saturday. I'm there to walk through all the test prep and review and administer the tests on that Friday and Saturday with help from folks that we zoom in from Clackamas Community College, our partner's there. And we did this once before, last winter. We had seven participants. Each one took four tests over the course of those two days. And we had one participant miss one question on one of the tests that made him below the 70% range. But outside of that, every one of those tests, we had 100% pass rate. And then those people were ready to go off. They had their license, and they were ready to go off and apply for the actual license permit itself, which is no easy feat, but it's a, it's a, the hard work was done. And it is, it's the only program in the state that allows you to actually take the test while you prep. And so I highly encourage people to take it. You don't have to drive to the valley to take the test, is what I'm saying. And then lots more stuff. I also wanted to give a quick plug, taking advantage of the TV cameras and your vast audience out there that's watching the Urban Renewal meeting. The Central Coast Marketing Academy is a grant-funded program that we're launching this year with support from Lincoln County Commissioners. And it is bringing people together to deliver 10 sessions, 10 separate workshops that are all delivered by marketing experts, folks from Oregon State University. I'll talk a little bit about, about who's coming. Chuck Toomes, the gentleman who discovered the seaweed that tastes like bacon a few years ago here in Lincoln County at the Hatfield, is coming over from Corvallis. And he, he not only is still an active professor in the Marketing Department at the College of Business, but he owns Dulce Energy and is selling this to Japan, as well as lots of places in Portland. We have Professor Hal Koenig, who many moons ago, in my own MBA program, he was my marketing professor. He's coming over to talk about building brands for small businesses on the Oregon coast and also affordable market research. And then I have some friends of mine who are coming out from Denver and Kansas City at their own expense. And one of them, Drew Elder, is a, an executive with Janus Henderson Funds. That's him right there, ringing the bell at the New York Stock Exchange. He runs sales teams of all sorts for financial instruments in London and in the States. And he's one of those friends that we all have that remind us how little we've accomplished in our own lives. But I love him nonetheless. And Drew actually knows this market quite well. He was a partner in a business that I started back in 2005. And, and he took a real hands-on interest in that and was very supportive. He knows this market better than probably most executives who fly between Denver and London every week. And he's here to share some amazing expertise on sales development and sales training. And along with Todd Vincent and Dan Simon, two other of my close friends. And I just think in the 20-plus years I've been in Lincoln County, we've never really offered robust sales training to businesses that really sorely need it. And we're going to start this program with two consecutive sales-focused workshops, one by these three gentlemen, and then in November, a gentleman named Gary Smith is coming over from Eugene, also to talk about behavioral selling. And then we've got lots of other experts like Misty Lambrecht, who's you're about to hear from, who will be teaching social media. And we've got a lot of other exciting things coming. So if you'd like to know more about marketing, we want you in that program. Basically, if your business advertises anywhere outside of Lincoln County or sells anywhere outside of Lincoln County, we think you need to be a part of this program. And please visit our website, oregoncoastcc.org, click on Small Business, and fill out a form that tells us you're interested. We can tell you we're going to have more interest than we have space. We already are at that point. And so there will be some sort of a lottery drawing, but we are going to skew towards the larger businesses because that is our arrangement with the county, that we need to make an impact on the places that advertise out of this market. And so we're really excited about that. And then I have questions here, but I thought maybe I could bail out and let Marcy come up and tell you a little bit about her experience with the program, and then Misty as well. And if you have any questions for them, great. And if you have any questions for me, I'll pop right back up.
Okay. Good idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And as you get started, would you mind just saying your name again?
I'm Marcy Baker. I own Marcy's Bar and Bistro in Ocean Lake, also a long, longtime local of Lincoln City.
Misty Lambrecht, Oregon Coast Community College.
So I just prepared just a little statement. I participated in the Small Business Management Program and also the Profit Mastery class, which was really incredible to me that I could find classes with such valuable information here in Lincoln City. I, I got my degree in anthropology at U of O, and I did not utilize their business school for business classes when I could have. So it's very, very nice to, to be able to have this offered in this community. Throughout the monthly classes and the coaching sessions, this program enabled me to gain a realistic outside perspective on my business. I learned how to produce my own accurate financial reports, any kind that I might need. And, and having the ability to ask questions specific to my business of people that are incredibly knowledgeable is, it's not, not something you can find easily. Let's see, I, I was able to utilize these reports to very quickly optimize my short-term cash flow and, and be able to plan for long-term growth. And I, being a new business owner, I've been running my own business for about a year and a half now, there's a huge learning curve. There's so many things you don't even know that you don't know. And, and opportunities out there that, that you might not know about. And, and certainly trying to figure it out on your own is messy. But the, the Small Business Management Program, it's, it's more than just the knowledge that's shared in each class that you can implement immediately and make, make a change in your business. But it's very easy to feel alone and lost as a business owner, especially a small business. And you can feel isolated. And the Small Business Development Center is, it's a compassionate, thriving community of entrepreneurs of all skill levels that work together to, to enhance Lincoln City as a whole. I am very honored to have been welcomed into this family and to have the opportunity to share with you how it's benefited me personally. The skills and the knowledge and work-life balance and the friendships that I gained over the last year have been invaluable. And I firmly believe that funding education is the best way for the city to support our local small business economy. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you for the scholarship.
Misty, would you like to say a few words?
Oh, I think that you really gave us the whole thing. You know, I think it's been powerful for a lot of businesses. I've seen folks come into the program. Some of them come in in the beginning with, I know everything, and I, I don't need any help. And two or three classes in, they're going, oh, I didn't know that existed. I didn't know that was the way it worked. I didn't understand that. I, I didn't ever, I've had people who have never done their books, been in business for a long time, and then they come and they actually do their books, and they actually understand what their books mean. And they grow beyond the, I still have checks and I still have money, so I must be okay. To, I'm actually profitable. I took home a paycheck, you know, or I have a sellable entity. Or, and, and we see this also as a success, is I need to get out of business. This isn't for me. And we see that in all, in all aspects. So we see, and one of the things we get very proud of is I'm helping in the transition from, in family business, from a parent's to a child. And we've seen that on multiple occasions, and that is a very good thing to see. We get a business that's going to continue to thrive long-term, and we bring in that new, younger generation to run those businesses. And I think that the best example of that last year was Bear Valley Nursery. I mean, they are making that transition, and it is not an easy one. And, you know, they, they're doing it. And I think that that business will be around for a long, long time. And if they didn't have that transitional support, I don't know that they would. So that's been very powerful. And they were also a scholarship recipient.
Great. Thank you both. Any questions for these two before we let them go?
Marcy, could you just speak to, for a minute? I'm, I'm sure there's some questions you had, being the business owner and manager, and it's all yours, how you could take the time away to get this other education?
Well, it's an interesting question. Actually, I spoke with Dave about this. And I might have even said it to Misty at one point. But when Dave first emailed me and approached me about participating in the program, that was my first thought, is I am so busy. There's absolutely no way that I'm going to be able to work this into my schedule. I have to be here. And, and honestly, I wasn't paying myself at the time. I was working entirely for free, well, for tips. And yeah, I was, I was exhausted. And I looked at that line, and I thought, well, one day a month, I could do that. And so I just looked at my schedule. I found someone that could work that shift, and I, I committed to it. And, and it was the best decision I made. Because, and even, even in the middle of the program, I decided to take the Profit Mastery class, which was in the spring term. And that was five weeks, every single week, and it was in Newport. So that was even more of a commitment, but I had to drive all the way to Newport, five weeks, which I went on Memorial Day.
Only student we've ever had.
But, but it really, I was able to have so much more time. Now I have, I'm working four days a week. I pay myself. I have great staff. I changed my hiring practices. I trained my employees differently. And, I mean, the fact of the matter is, I wouldn't be writing myself a paycheck every other week if it weren't for Misty. Like, it's that simple. That's how very real it affected my life.
Very cool. Congratulations. Any other questions?
The time's there if you make it, and you can make the time if it's valuable enough. And it really is.
I don't really have a question. I just want to say thank you. Because I, I looked through this presentation before the meeting, and I, the question that, I had two thoughts. One is, I'm really impressed by people who run their own businesses. And it's so difficult to come, everybody comes to Lincoln City thinking it's going to be wonderful and I'll make a life here, and it's not easy. And to see people actually succeeding in doing that is really, it's really rewarding. And you really answered, I, the other thing was, I was wondering, what are the concrete benefits, really tangible things, that you bring out of this program to make it worthwhile? And you frankly have answered those questions.
Okay. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. I think what we need to do now is, is accept Dave Price's report. Do you have a motion for that?
Accept the report.
Isn't that right?
Go ahead, yeah.
A motion? No, you can make it up. We have some other business, so we need to move quickly.
I'd move that we accept the annual update from the Small Business Development Center.
Thank you very much. Second? Second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. I, because we do have a few things, a couple more things on the agenda in a very short time, we are going to move to G Special Order of Business, more presentation. Allison?
Can we do the grant?
That's where we're at.
Oh, okay. Got you.
That's a special order of business, which is the local program support grant request for Small Business Center. And this is the funding that Allison was talking about earlier.
Thank you. So this is the second portion of Dave's, it's the Dave Knight, to, to request some funds for this upcoming fiscal year, academic year, for the local program support grant. So, and there's a Project One, which is the SBM Scholarship, which you just heard from one of the recipients of that scholarship fund. Total request of $13,500. And Project Number Two, which is the Small Business Training Classes, so people can take a class at a time or several classes. And the request is $6,500. take a class at a time, or, or several classes, and the request is $6,500. So, if you would like to make a motion, you can make a motion to make that funding request, which is a total of $20,000. I would just ask that you make a note that one of the projects exceeds the $10,000 cap. So, the way the program is set up, partners can request up to $10,000 per project, but not to exceed $20,000 per, per entity. Maybe it's 25, sorry. And so, because the total cap to the organization is still under the threshold, this is what you did last year as well. So, you acknowledge that one program, and Dave can speak to this if you have questions, but they're anticipating more, more than $10,000 need of funding for the one program, just because they have more success with that and more demand. Given that the Urban Renewal District has limitations on the number of, of businesses and the number of employees that businesses can send to these classes, so he is working with a limited pool of, of students. And I did note that in 2017, you requested that the Local Program Support Grant, that the criteria be revised, so that you wouldn't have to make an exception, you could just say, this is with, within the threshold to the organization, and you don't need to get into the weeds of how much per program or project. And so, we'll be bringing that to you sometime this calendar year.
That's good to hear.
I was going to make the simple one, but now it's all confused, I'm all confused, so.
How about if you try it, and then we'll help you massage it if it needs?
Well, I was doing good, because it was right here, until she added the, we, I can make a motion to approve the Local Program Support Grant Request to the Small Business Development Center, in the amount of 20,000, then noting.
Noting that you're making an exception to exceed the $10,000 cap for one project, in this case, but not exceeding the total cap for the organization.
That's exactly right.
Hope that's okay. Kathy?
We have that?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? How about?
Can I just ask a question? So, and this sounds fine, I notice under, I'm looking at your report here, and it says there's a budget line of $48,000 allocated in economic development grants, is this part of that $48,000?
Yes, it is. Yes.
I guess I'm wondering, is there other, are there other requests that might be competing for the same dollars? I, you evidently made a decision this is worthwhile, but could you maybe go into that?
Sure. Yeah, we haven't had any other requests. In the past, we had a request from, by local Lincoln County, and we did fund that. I think that was in 2000, I think it was 2014, 15. And then, we did have conversation with another organization about submitting for some funds, but they ultimately decided it wasn't the right fit for what they wanted to accomplish. So, we haven't had any other inquiries, and we haven't had any other applications.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
You need a roll call, call the money.
Oh, we need a roll call, that's right, it's money.
Anderson?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Kooz?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. Thank you, Dave.
And all of our clients are as eloquent as Marcy. I was wondering. Thank you very much.
Your poster person. Okay, I'm, sorry, but moving us right along, we have another special order of business, which is an update on new urban renewal areas, a minor amendment, which is major, but anyway.
Yes. Thank you for the clarification. So, this is really just a repeat of what was presented to you as wearing your city council member hat, but because you are a separate organization, I wanted this just to be on the record, that you have received an update about new urban renewal areas. Two of them don't really concern you, when it comes to creating a new urban renewal plan, and a report that goes with it, with a lot of technical information, that is really the city council's role. And so, again, wearing your other hat, you'll be keeping apprised of the progress on that. And so, that, that one is the Rhodes End Villages at Cascadehead Urban Renewal Area, and we will, of course, bring back an update to council when we have more information on where we're at. As you know, the Ad-Hoc Committee is on your agenda for this evening as council. We also have the Nell Scott Southeast 23rd Street Industrial Mixed Use Urban Renewal Plan and Report. At this point, we are not focusing on creating a plan, we are focusing on creating some background and fundamental information to answer major key questions, two or three questions about urban growth boundary, and properties, and roads, and, and other things. So, as soon as we have more information on that, we'll bring that, obviously, again, back to city council. The one that I would want you to key in on, as you mentioned, is the minor amendment. It is more simple than a substantial amendment, and so, this is basically going to be an adjustment to the boundary, and what we will be doing is removing tax-exempt properties from the urban renewal boundary now. So, that shouldn't affect Dave Price and his ability to make, you know, scholarships available to businesses, because they are tax-exempt. So, usually, there's not a business in that tax-exempt property. We are taking a fine-tooth comb to the map before we remove those properties, and much of that is, you know, government property, and then also right-of-way. So, we've been working with our GIS Coordinator on trying to maximize the acreage that we can pull out of that urban renewal boundary, so that we have that acreage available to put into a new area, should that be the council's decision. So, the next steps are, for the minor amendment, are to clarify a little bit about the boundary and what we want to remove, revise the legal description, have a resolution come to you as the Urban Renewal Agency, and then transmit that to the county, and then circle back and correct some tax lot information. So, a few steps, we're hoping to get that to you in September, at the latest October, but we don't expect that that'll take too long. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Allison? Yippee is what I have to say.
Thank you.
My comment. Great work, thank you. Before we move to adjourn, I would just like to ask the city recorder if we need to do a revote for the approval of the minutes of June 10th. There were only three, my count, there were three votes for, and I abstained, and remember, Mark wasn't here yet?
Yeah.
Sorry?
We have the quorum.
Now we, okay.
Oh, we did that.
Yeah, even, okay. I just wanted to check. Okay, we have two minutes, and I just want to thank all of you who came and who gave us presentations today, it was, was great, and our updates, so I'd like to say, good evening, and we are adjourned.